All right then, it is now one minute after seven o'clock. It is Monday, April 4th, 2016, here at the City Hall Forum. We're called to order, roll call.
All councilors are present.
All right, item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, item three, Special Orders and the Day of Announcements, 3A.
Is a proclamation recognizing National Library Week of April 10th through the 16th.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. An official proclamation from the city of Beloit. Whereas libraries are not just about what they have for people, but what they do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and to continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles and providing more opportunities for community engagement and deliver new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users. Whereas libraries transform the lives of individuals, communities, and cities. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week with the theme "Libraries Transform." Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Beloit proclaims National Library Week, April 10th through 16th, 2016. We encourage all residents to visit the Beloit Public Library this week, explore what's new, and engage with your community members so that together we continue to make this great city even greater. Adopted this fourth day of April, 2016, City Council of the city of Beloit, Charles M. Haynes, Council President. And I know we have Nick Damassas in the audience.
Can I say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Vice President DeForest, President Haynes, council members, and City Manager Luther. Thank you very much for this. Every year, we do not take this for granted. This is a great pleasure, and most of all because it affirms your confidence in us, in what we do at the library each and every day of the year, that by pursuing our three main focal areas of literacy, jobs and careers, and quality of life, that we are in fact delivering the services and resources to all the residents of the community. It also means that we've been listening and that we've been responding in ways that are important. And there's no better way for us to listen than to hear from each and every one of you. No one knows their constituents better than all of you. You've been very, of course, quick to praise and encourage, but you've also never hesitated from challenging the library to look at its services and resources in new, innovative ways, so we really appreciate that. And then City Manager Luther, thank you very much for your leadership and vision and the library's role in that. I never tire of saying that one of her first acts as City Manager was to come into the library and get library cards for herself and her children. And that just shows the importance of the library to the community, both as an administrator and as a parent. And so you can hear her talk about just what the library means to her. Next week, we kick off the National Library Week with an ice cream social at the library, and I'll have Andrea talk about that. Another way that we listen, though, and just before I hand it over to her, is we have, like many organizations, comment cards. And so I want to read you one that we just received the other day. It says, "Dear Beloit Public Library Director, I really love your library. Me and my mom play here often. I read a lot of books. So, thank you so much. Yours truly, me and my mom." So, and I would say this is very important, but I hope I don't offend when I say that maybe this is more important to us. So, thank you very much.
And I just want to follow up what Nick said to talk a little bit about the events that we have going on to celebrate National Library Week at the library. As Nick said, we're kicking it off with an ice cream social on Monday, next Monday, the 11th, from 6:00 to 7:30. As a thank you to all of our patrons, we are going to be providing ice cream, free ice cream, and we're going to have a performance by the Badger Chord Hawks at 6:15, so I hope you can all be there for that. Then on Thursday, we're going to have a book signing with local author Matt Forbeck, whose book, Captain America: The Ultimate Guide to the First Avenger, comes out tomorrow. He is a New York Times bestseller and award-winning game designer, and he lives right here in Beloit. So he will be at the library at 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 14th, to sell books and also sign books and also just be there to talk about his work. That week, we're also having a special call and recall for adults from Monday through Thursday evenings, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. So I hope you can come out for that. And then just to look at our full calendar events for that whole week, you can check out our website, beloitlibrary.org, or check out our newsletter, which is available at the library. And then I also want to announce that Beloit Public Library will be celebrating National Burger Month in May with four local restaurants and four local leaders, including Councilwoman Regina Hendricks. So we're excited to be announcing some more details coming very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Item 3B.
Is a proclamation in recognition of Fair Housing Month.
An official proclamation of the city of Beloit. Whereas April 2016 marks the 48th anniversary of the national fair housing law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and therefore is an appropriate time for all citizens to reflect on the principles which led to a national policy of fair and equal housing opportunities across the United States. And whereas fair and equal opportunity in housing means that persons of equal income have the same access to the sale, rental, and financing of all housing regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, family status, marital status, sexual orientation, age, or ancestry. And whereas fair housing is the policy of the city of Beloit, and the implementation of that policy requires the positive commitment, involvement, and support of each of our citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the month of April, 2016, as Fair Housing Month, and does hereby encourage all citizens to abide by the letter and spirit of the fair housing laws, and asks the citizens of the city to join in reaffirming the obligation and commitment to fair housing opportunities for all. Adopted this fourth day of April, 2016, City Council of the city of Beloit, Charles M. Haynes, Council President. And I believe we have Terry Downing here to accept.
The month of April is nationally designated as Fair Housing Month to commemorate Congress passing the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which includes the Fair Housing Act. Although the law passed over 40 years ago, discriminatory practices continue. The Equal Opportunities Commission is responsible for receiving and investigating any complaints of discriminatory practices concerning housing in the city of Beloit and to facilitate efforts to prevent discriminatory practices. The commission believes that by raising awareness, people are empowered to protect their rights, and those who may infringe on these rights are deterred from engaging in unfair practices. I also would like to announce that the state NAACP conference is this Saturday, April 16th. Is that this Saturday or next Saturday? Next Saturday, April 16th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Emmanuel Baptist Church Fellowship Hall, so I hope to see some people there. Thank you.
All right, item four is public hearings. Item 4A.
Is an ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 8-908-1000 of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 19 of the Code of General Ordinances relating to construction site erosion control and post-construction stormwater management. First reading.
Madam Director.
The city of Beloit's stormwater program is regulated by the Wisconsin DNR General Permit Discharge. With one of the requirements of the 2014 issuance of the general permit to discharge requires the city to update Sections 8-900 and 8-1000 of the zoning ordinance to meet the current DNR runoff management standards. This ordinance will ensure consistency with NR 151, the two sections. So 8-900 is the construction site erosion control, so that's during construction. So an approved written erosion control plan is required for each project in order to obtain an erosion control permit. And then staff enforces the ordinance as part of regular inspections, and then frequently requires contractors to clean up project sites during construction, clean up the street if they drag sediment through the streets. And this section of the ordinance sets an explicit limit on the amount of sediment that can be discharged from construction sites larger than an acre. And then 8-1000 is the post-construction stormwater management. So developers are required to submit a written stormwater management plan and maintenance agreement. The stormwater infrastructure must remove 80% of suspended solids on new construction and 40% of solids on redevelopment construction, and that ordinance only applies after construction is complete. And then Section 2-803 relates to the issuance of certificates of occupancy. This proposed amendments would require a maintenance agreement to be filed and recorded with the Rock County Register of Dates prior to any issuance of certificate of occupancy for a building. Plan Commission did review this item on March 23rd and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Tonight, you'll have the public hearing and first reading, and if you do have any questions, both the city engineer and the stormwater engineer are both here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll open the public hearing on item 4A. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A, please approach the podium and state your name and Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. Do we have a motion to lay over?
Motion.
Moved by Loopkey, second by Slonaker. Do we have any questions or comments, staff? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I just wanted to check with Mr. Flusch and Mr. Frisby. Have you received any commentary on the amendment at all from any interested parties?
We haven't received any comments on the ordinance amendment.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to check. Appreciate that.
All right. All right, we'll vote on this. All in favor of laying this over, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item is laid over to the next meeting. Item 4B.
An ordinance to amend Section 6.3.4 Sub-D of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 19 of the Code of General Ordinances for the city of Beloit, relating to detached accessory buildings for garbage and recycling container storage. First reading.
Madam Director.
City staff initiated the attached ordinance in anticipation of storage issues resulting from the increased size of the new automated collection trash and recycling containers and stored space that may affect people with one-car garages or their garage just isn't going to be large enough, and they want to still keep them in a structure itself. So we did work with public work staff to determine that each container, including a one-foot buffer for maneuvering, would occupy approximately 20 square feet. And each single family, single and two-family dwelling will be issued two containers, so we've set a maximum building size of 40 square feet as a result. The current zoning ordinance allows single and two-family properties to have up to two detached accessory structures. This would allow a third specifically for trash, so it would allow them to construct a third detached building not to exceed the 40 square feet in area per unit, which is related to the sizes of the containers, and provided that said building is designed and used exclusively to store the new automated collection trash and recycling containers. We are not requiring people to keep them in a structure. They can be on the side of their building. It can't be in the front porch and in the front yard. So if people do want to leave them on the side, they can, but for those who want them inside in a closed structure, this gives them the option of a third detached structure. Plan Commission did review this on March 23rd and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Tonight, it's on your agenda for public hearing and first reading only.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on item 4B. I did have one question. Mr. Dorr, did you wish to address this or the next one, or the ordinance?
I'd be the right time.
Okay, please do. Go ahead and approach the --
I'm getting that NCAA game.
Okay.
I had a handout. That's you, huh? Only had eight. Sorry. The last one.
Thank you.
The city of Beloit is preparing to transfer over to the larger bins for garbage and recycling. I support the opportunity to upgrade our garbage collection, realizing that other communities have already participated in the use of these large bins. Listening to some complaints about what to do with these bins, I went online just to see how other communities are dealing with this problem, and I came across a flyer from Cottage Grove. They use it online, and I thought it would work in Beloit as well. Maybe a flyer could be taped to the bin that would, when it was being delivered, giving residents, the flyer could help them come up with acceptable solution. The flyers' colors were like eight cents and three cents in black and white. The reason I liked this flyer was it was somewhat simple. You know, it says in the beginning, "Ideas from local neighbors to help create your trash container enclosure." Basically like the X not wanting to see it in front of your garage, to be sure your trash container's out of public view. Seemed very simple. Store it in your garage, and if not, create your own enclosures. They were showing some examples, and there's like a fence that's hard to see, but just so it was, you know, just behind. Kind of the one attached to the garage is a bit interesting, but on the whole, it was just coming up with creative ideas of what to do with it, so. And I just, the whole world has gone on to these other containers and the way of taking care of garbage and not having guys slipping and falling, so I'm really happy that you are following through with it, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 4B? Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Ashley Rosenbaum. Me llamo Ashley Rosenbaum. I've lived in Beloit for 25 years. He vivido en la ciudad de Beloit por 25 años. Y estoy aquí porque he leído algunas declaraciones en el periódico que me molestan. I'm here because recently I read some statements in the newspaper that upset me, mostly the fact that there are no city employees that speak Spanish.
Ma'am, is this in reference to, is this in reference to item 4B?
No.
Oh, okay. We do have a section that you'll be able to fully speak about items that are, other items that are interesting to you, and it sounds like you've got something to say, but if you could reference this to item five, which is citizens' participation, which is the next item.
Oh goodness, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. I want you to be able to say what you want to say, because it sounds like you've got something really important, and I really want you to say it.
I just have one more sentence.
Okay, go ahead.
We want to hear again.
I just wanted to say that there are multiple city employees that speak Spanish, and we are more than willing to help out other departments who may have translation issues. That's all. Thank you.
Oh, no. Okay, all right then. Thank you very, very much.
That would be yours. I was going to --
Oh, okay, thank you. All right then. Okay, so do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 4B? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Hearing done, I'll close item 4B, the public hearing. Do we have a motion to lay over? Moved by Hendricks, second by Loopkey. All right, questions and comments? Counselor Kelly.
So at this point, it sounds like they don't have to be out of sight. They can just be on the side of the house, but not necessarily out of the sight from the street. Did I hear that right?
That would be the case at this moment, because there's some, I would imagine, yeah.
Want to make sure that I --
Understood. Do we have any other councilor questions or comments? All right then, do we have a motion to lay over? Or we have the motion to lay over, do we have, let's go ahead and call the matter. All in favor of laying over, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of 7-0. All right. Item five is citizens' participation. We've reached a point in the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless the item you are speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on requests at a future meeting or refer to speaker or to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making personal attacks. I've got several things that are in front of us here. One of the things, let's see, I'll segregate these out so they're all roughly together. And I've got three individuals that are wishing to speak about the ordinance for the commissions. Unfortunately, it looks like before we had a chance to proofread this, we set this up for, to suspend the rules. That will not happen. We will not be taking action on that tonight. While we are going to have a staff presentation, we will be laying that over for a indeterminate future response, so just so that you know. But you certainly feel free to speak to us if you wish, or you can wait for when we are going to take action. I think we'll start off with, the first person who has a sheet is Priscia Gustina.
Well, I would have to be first. Good evening. The reason I'm here is because as a concerned citizen, I didn't know, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this, and I don't know if the council members are aware or not, but about a year ago, I was in, helping out the police department with a murder investigation, and there was surveillance cameras that were in one of our buildings, and they were taking a look at a vehicle that was suspicious. And there was another vehicle across town that they were, they thought was the same vehicle. I found out, I just said to the policeman or the detective, I think it was a detective, "Why don't you just have him take a picture of it and send it on over? We can check it out and compare it with our surveillance camera." And he said, "We can't do that. They don't have the technology." So I'm here because that was kind of a surprise to me that they don't have a phone, a smartphone, that they can take a picture and send it over to another officer to double-check and, you know, on something. And they had apparently, unless it's been upgraded, a flip phone, and they weren't able to do that. And as a concerned citizen, I was kind of, you know, like, couldn't believe that. Nowadays, with the technology the way it is, I want you to be aware of it. I think it's really important that detectives and even police officers, I don't know how much money that would cost, but to me, it just seems like they should be able to take a picture on sight or whatever and get it to whoever they need to get it to without having to run and get a camera and go through that old way of taking a picture of something. So I'm just here to just mention that, just to make you aware, and hopefully that can change. Secondly, I mean, I'm just here representing the Landlord's Association. You'll find more out about that, about the new state law. And thirdly, I'm here for Brave because, and supported them. I just had a tenant yesterday that called me up and told me that he was leaving the city and going somewhere else due to violence and, you know, drug issues here in Beloit. And I don't want to see that happen. So, you know, I love Beloit. Beloit's an awesome place to be. I want it to get better, and so I'm here for supporting them too. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Darrell Wilds, in support of Brave.
Good evening.
Evening.
As you know, I am Darrell Wilds, and I represent Brave, businesses rallying against violent environment. We are a group of business owners driven by crime in our neighborhood. Since our inception, we have become a community-driven group made up of business owners and citizens alike. As a group, we're working together to restore Beloit to the strong, proud community it once was. At one time, we were known as the All-American City. Brave is open to all citizens and business owners, businesses alike. We encourage all partners to be good representatives, leading with integrity, ownership, and secure safety for all. We as a group believe that integrity, ownership, and safety are key in empowering the people of Beloit by taking responsibility, not just for our neighborhoods where we live and do business, but citywide, creating a standard of no tolerance throughout our city. In other words, changing the mindset that is, if it's not in my neighborhood or on my block, I don't care. It's not my problem. Citywide ownership is what we're trying to push in our group. It's not just a block, it's not a few, it's citywide ownership, and we believe that that's what's going to make the changes. Our goal of accomplishment is to educate citizens in knowing their neighbors, sharing information, learning to problem-solve, learning about resources available throughout the community, and how to utilize them as a support, such as police, dispatch, fire, EMS, housing, code enforcement, city committees, and councils, churches, and schools alike. The burden of city recovery cannot fall on any one agency. It has to come from the community. They have to want change, and change requires ownership. And the hard part is it's, you got to own the good along with the bad. You can't just pick and choose. It's got to be all across the board. We hope to reach as many citizens as we can to join with us in our endeavor to recover our All-American City, and we'd like to thank you for your time tonight, and also your commitment to help us to better the city. And I would like to point out, we got quite a group over behind us in support tonight, and we'd like to thank them as well. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Finnegan, 2212, Noelview Drive. I'm here, I'm speaking on behalf of the Beloit Property Managers Association. We just wanted to make sure that the city council was aware of a new state ordinance called Act 176 that could possibly affect our housing maintenance program, especially the, on the rental properties. We're concerned about that. We're also concerned about recent case law done at the state and national level having to do with the Fourth Amendment rights of our residents. Kind of fitting with fair housing, actually, that they have the same rights as homeowners do as far as illegal search and seizure of their home. So they, we would like to just make sure that the city council directs staff and the city attorney to really take a look at that and see how it affects us. Thankfully, we've already got a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but we've got quite a crew here that are in support of making sure that we do this right in Beloit. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Walter Knight.
Mr. President, members of the council, city manager, and most of all, to the citizens of this community, good evening. I feel obligated to come before you this evening to let you know, if you don't know, that you have stepped over the line, city council, as it relates to the Police and Fire Commission's roles and responsibilities. If you knew upfront, and I assume that you do, you did because of the facts of what has happened recently, that you wanted to hire the interim chief as the police chief for the city, you should have had the city manager or someone to call a special meeting with the Police and Fire Commission, go into closed session, put your request on the table. Police and Fire Commission may have agreed with you. I don't know if anyone had a problem with who you were going to hire as the chief. But when you let a fictitious process go into effect, hiring a consultant, outreach, recruitment, advertising, interviewing, spending those dollars when they could have been avoided, that's stepping over the line. The other point I want to make is that in terms of a package offered to an employee-staff person, I don't believe the city manager needs your approval if it's in the budget. I think that she can negotiate a package as long as it is in the budget. And the other point I want to make, I hope that, I think it's going to blow back up in our face, because 6213 of the Wisconsin statute gives the commission certain powers and duties. And if you're going to try to reconstruct the rules and ordinances where that the citizens of the community have no power to recommend to you, you're not going to have anyone that want to serve on committees. This has worked for the past, as long as I've been in here, 50 years. We've never had a problem with the police commission making recommendations on their roles and responsibilities. So I'm hoping that we can get through this, and that you need to understand your roles and don't let your budget restraints dictate what's going to happen when a decision has to be made. And I just want to remind the citizens that tomorrow is voting day. And don't forget that, to go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I have, okay. All right, I've got two sheets from Wanda Sloan.
Good evening. There should be only one, but you got two, so. All right, Wanda Sloan, 27, 09, North Robinson Drive, representing the League of Women Voters in Beloit. I'm speaking to the proposed ordinance regarding city boards, committees, and commissions. The League of Women Voters throughout the nation believes that democratic government depends upon informed and active participation in government and requires that governmental bodies protect the citizen's right to know by giving adequate notice of proposed actions, holding open meetings, and making public records accessible. The proposed ordinance and the way it is being presented is the perfect example of suppressing that goal for democratic government. Presenting a new ordinance at one meeting, holding all the required readings on it, and then holding the vote at that same meeting demonstrate to citizens the desire to minimize public involvement on that issue. If the goal of the proposed ordinance is to encourage people to volunteer for boards and commissions, an extended schedule of public hearings should be held to inform the public about each of the commissions. Diluting the public's right to timely and factual information or reducing the opportunity for further research into the pros and cons of such a change and restricting an opportunity for citywide forums on the matter only serves as a deterrent to citizen participation. It also impedes the voices, opinions of new and incoming city council members whom will be elected tomorrow. To reiterate what Mr. Knight just said, during the recent candidate forums sponsored by the League, the NAACP, and the Chamber of Commerce, words such as transparency, equity, visibility, and how to improve the image of Beloit were used quite extensively by incumbents as well as eager candidates to describe their platforms and/or to use politically correct language. Words are powerful and very important. However, actions speak louder than words. We, the League, urge you to give the people more information, to engage and encourage increased participation on our city boards and commissions, and time to make an unbiased decision. If city councillors are committed to, end quote, "improving the negative image of Beloit," end quote, this would be a great way to demonstrate that the people matter. Since the proposed ordinance can have far-reaching impact on several commissions, lots of opportunity for public input on the duties and role of the committees should be provided. We urge you to do the important work of encouraging public input and not quelling it. Finally, we would like to commend the PFC and other commissions for the work that has been done in the past. We thank the city managers, city manager and councillors for your service, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment on this important issue.
Before you step away, I would like to say that I would hope that you would stand by for the public or for the presentation on this, because your, a couple of your statements are factually incorrect.
Okay, I will. I will stand by. Thank you.
All right, Anita Williams.
Anita Williams, 911 Bushnell. I'm here this evening to speak to the proposed revisions to the Code of General Ordinances relative to city boards, committees, and commissions. Frankly, I am very concerned that the council is taking up this ordinance without any public hearing, even though this item in your packet clearly indicates the city manager has been contemplating this action since early March. My concerns regarding this ordinance are as follows. One, by removing a fixed time and location for the meetings, you are making it nearly impossible for anyone who wishes to observe and/or monitor the actions of a board or commission to do so, because the meeting time and location will be unknown. The city's electronic meeting notification system for the public does not work. I have signed up for the list for both the Plan Commission and the Parks and Recreation packets and have never received a meeting notice, let alone a meeting packet. And I have notified staff and complained about this several times to no avail. If the city is having problems getting people to volunteer for boards and be faithful in their attendance, maybe the council should look at its own actions. Overruling the considered decisions of boards and commissions for political reasons does not instill confidence, either, does not instill either confidence in the council, nor give people a reason to go out once or twice a month, having spent time doing their homework concerning the issues to come before a board, only to have the council substitute its political desires for the board members' often more nuanced judgments. Additionally, if attendance is an issue, the council could consider an amendment to the ordinance that says, "End number of meetings missed," and you're off the board. I served on both the Plan Commission and Community Development Authority in the past, in the late 80s and early to mid 90s, and I know that I planned my travel around my obligation to those boards. I recognize some people can't do that, but maybe they should defer their membership on the boards until they can. Verified illness could count as an excused absence up to a set number of missed meetings that would be different from your end meetings unexcused, and you would be gone. Council members should not be voting on, voting members of boards and commissions. You get a chance to vote when matters come to this council, and you shouldn't get two chances to vote. Deal with the problem of non-attendance of citizen members, and you won't need to make council members voting members in case we don't have a quorum. That's a terrible reason to have to excuse making council members voting members of a board or a commission. Three, removing a member for cause, as is allowed in the revisions, is very vague. There is no list of causes that might be a reason for removal. And to some extent, it smacks of a Star Chamber process. If I don't like the decisions you make on X commission, I just have to file a complaint about you, and then get a majority of, majority of either the Appointment Review Board or the city council to agree with me, agree that your decisions aren't to their liking, and you're gone. That's how vague that particular section is right now. There needs to be some kind of a list of what constitutes cause for removal. Four, by making nominees of some boards and commissions subject to the council interviews, you are removing their independence, which is why the boards and commissions should exist in the first place. They are not rubber stamps to do the council's will, but groups of people, some of whom have considerably greater knowledge in a special area than any one council member could, who have volunteered to serve the city. Asking them questions in an interview process about how they might vote on issues coming before a given board is as wrong as asking a nominee for a court seat, how they would vote on cases that would come before that court. It appears that the intent of these proposed changes is to make the boards and commissions tame and to make their decisions conform to the council's will on matters that come before the commissions. If this is even the perception, why would anyone bother to serve on a board or a commission, as I noted in my second point? Perception becomes reality, whether it should or not. The proposal to have candidates to the PFC be subject to council interviews that might include questions about hiring what recommendations is quite possibly illegal. The PFC is supposed, by state statute, to be independent, and making its members subject to interview removes that independence. As you can tell, I am deeply concerned about the content of the proposed ordinance changes. If the council thinks that there need to be changes made, it can be done in a deliberate manner with lots of opportunity for public input, as Wanda Sloan mentioned before. What is happening tonight bears no resemblance to a transparent process. You should not proceed to enact these changes without public input and further revisions. Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point of the agenda. Does a council member wish anything removed from the consent agenda? All right, was there anybody else wishing to speak under citizens' participation? Yes, I should have asked. I'm moving right along, so. It happens. Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Third and final call, speak under citizens' participation. All right, so, and hearing none, I'll close citizens' participation. I'd assumed that was all, sorry. Then, as I mentioned, we have the consent agenda. Now, does anybody wish anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda consists of items 6A through 6H. Moved by Lubke, seconded by Slonaker. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Number seven, ordinances.
7A is an ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter 17 of the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit pertaining to the regulation of solid waste. This is second reading.
Good evening. Sorry. I'm going to be doing both Chapter 7. I'll just give the brief for 7 and 17. And all of the ordinance changes that have occurred result from us transferring our manual collection to automated collection June 6. And I really would like to see one of those flyers before I get too much farther on the cart storage. So Chapter 17 is a solid waste ordinance, and it has been completely recreated. Beth was more than gracious to spend a lot of time. It takes a lot of time to do these things. And the other sections that were amended include 7.23 (par. 1), 7.234 (par. 1), 7.234 (par. 2) and par. N, 7.24 (par. 12) and par. B, 1, and then 7.26 (par. 4) and 15.20 (par. 1) of the general ordinances. And like I said, all of these modifications and/or the rewrite of Chapter 17 were necessary for us to move forward with the automation program. So this is the second reading, and truly, we've been over and over this a lot with the automation. I appreciate being able to talk about automation, but in light of everything else, I think I'll just say automation absolutely supports the city's sustainability movement. We know that we are reducing our fleet, we are reducing our carbon footprint, and that is a great thing. It also promotes waste reduction and, at the same time, promotes more recycling to take place. So with the council's approval of this second reading of the amendments and the recreate of 17, it would be staff's and my recommendation that you do that.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, moved by Lubke, which, Counselor Kelly, seconded. All right, do we have any further questions or comments on item 7A? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item 7A passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 7B, do we have a motion to approve?
Is that moved?
Moved by DeForest, seconded by Slonaker. Do we have any additional questions or comments on item 7B? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 7C.
Is an ordinance to amend various sections of the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit pertaining to city boards, committees, and commissions. This is first reading.
All right. And, item city manager.
What an intro. I feel like I should start dancing. That's the best intro I've had in a while. So for first reading, I want to provide some background information to help address how we got to this point. And as a point of clarification, I want to make sure that the public at large understands that there have been two public meetings on this very topic. The first council workshop was held on February 8, and the second was held on March 14. On the March 14 workshop, a personal invitation to every current member of city boards, committees, and commissions was extended in addition to the public notice. Approximately 40 individuals attended that meeting and participated in the conversation about how the city's boards, committees, and commissions might be constructed in the future. The overall initiative began due to a need to fill vacancies on our existing boards, committees, and commissions. As an example, during the months of March and April, there were 27 vacancies for those 15 various boards. The other issue had to do, in particular, with our Ethics Board, which does not have to meet on a very frequent basis, but when it is needed, we certainly typically have a timely reason to gather that particular board. And so establishing a method by which we could get a quorum of individuals to serve on the Ethics Board was of utmost importance. So at those two recent council workshops, some potential changes were suggested, and those are in front of you in the form of changes to or amendments to the existing ordinances. The first of which addresses the Ethics Board in a way that ensures adequate membership for a quorum, and it suggests... And it suggests that the Chair of the Community Development Authority, the Municipal Library Board, the Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, the Plan Commission, and Police and Fire Commission each serve as standing members of the Ethics Board along with two at-large community members. That seven-member board then would always have a quorum should it be required, and they could be brought forward to hold a meeting if any complaints or concerns came forward to the city. The second is in regard to meeting times. And the intention was to require evening meetings between the hours of 6:30 and 8:00 PM for a variety of committees that need frequent public input. Over the course of the past year, we've received several comments from members of the public saying that they wished that they could have attended a particular meeting, but due to their work schedule, they were unable to attend and provide input. So we thought it was really important to create some parameters around which those meetings would be held. That said, the intention of removing the required time for other committees was not to suggest that they be held at any particular time each month, but that they gather during their first meeting of the year, establish a regular meeting schedule that meets the needs of the members, and that that be posted publicly and be consistent. In addition, there have been a variety of circumstances in which a quorum has not been present in order to act on business. Now, the council is certainly not suggesting that we discontinue the practice of having a very rich and fulfilling, I believe, number of community members that are participants in the system here. However, there are a number of cities that have individual members of the elected body that serve on a smaller number of those core committees. In this particular case, the intention was to limit the voting authority of any council member to only the circumstance when their presence is needed to create that quorum. The current ordinance does include, I believe, in most sections, I believe it's all sections, I need to double check, that there is a section that includes in each of them to potentially remove an individual from a particular commission or board based on their attendance at regularly scheduled meetings. So that is included and is an option. But even with that, there have been some circumstances where some very basic business could not be conducted due to a lack of a quorum. The next item regarding interviews by the City Council for appointments to particular committees. The conversation about that at our workshops had a great deal to do with the vast authority that many of the boards and commissions have. Please assume, if I don't say boards, committees, and commissions altogether each time, that I'm speaking about all of them at once, if I just call them boards, shall I? Because that's a mouthful, just going to tell you right now. With that said, the idea around interviews is not to ask any inappropriate questions, but there have been some circumstances, perhaps recently, where potential conflicts of interest may have existed and had not previously been determined. The intent is to determine upfront whether those conflicts of interest might exist in order to avoid any problems down the road. Now, that is something that the Appointment Review Committee could do now. It's also something the council could do now. Nothing prohibits the Appointment Review Committee or the council itself from conducting those interviews. There is nothing unlawful or impermissible about doing that. It simply has not been part of our practice to date. So the intent is to create some requirement, that there be a public conversation with the candidates to these very important committees and commissions, so we can vet some of that information ahead of time. And that was the intention there all along. Had nothing to do with asking about anyone's interest or position on any specific issue, but simply to determine that there wasn't any kind of direct or indirect or the appearance of any conflict that could challenge that individual's neutrality on a particular board. There are also a variety of cleanup language and making sure that it's consistent throughout. But in total, that is a summary of the content of the changes that have been presented. So this is the third public vetting of this particular topic, and it will come back for final action at a future date to the common council. If there are any citizen questions or concerns, including those raised this evening, I'm more than happy to present those and take those into the packet prior to the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to lay over?
Move to lay over.
Second.
Moved by DeForest, second by Loopkey. I would reiterate the City Manager's statement. It became quite clear to us last year that there had been continuing, there were several fully-staffed boards and commissions that at times couldn't reach quorum. There would be two or three. And the people's business, people had spent money to apply. They had contractors lying, ready to do work. They had other things going on, and they were being asked to wait for months. Yes, that portion of it does need to be addressed. We do have a critical board, the Board of Ethics, that absolutely needs to be reconstituted in a fashion that can be, that allows it to function. We've attempted to recruit for that. I think that's absolutely pertinent, and we must execute that. As far as some of the others, there was plenty, there's still conversation going on. We're going to lay this over. We'll have a chance to integrate your input with, you know, to further advance our goal of making, having a functioning board and commission system. So I do appreciate that. Do we have a vote to, I'll call the matter. All in favor, laying over, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes, or we have laid this over by a vote of seven to zero. All right, item eight, there wouldn't be no appointments today. Item nine is council activities and upcoming events, and Counselor Hendricks.
I just want to make an announcement on behalf of the city clerk, that voting day is tomorrow. There will be nine polling places open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. If you have questions about where to vote, you can go online at myvote.wi.gov. And we want to remind you not to let language barriers get in your way or keep you at home. Ashley Rosenbaum, who was just here, and let you know how fluent she was in other languages, has volunteered to assist with any barriers. So don't let that keep you at home. And then if you have any further questions, you can call the clerk's office prior to voting. Okay? And then Thursday, I just want to thank the YWCA Rock County for an award that I'm receiving, Women of Distinction. It's an honor. The award ceremony will be Thursday evening. It's her night to shine, so I plan to shine on Thursday with the rest of the women, including my sister. And then that night, I'm going to, I have to pack early because that night, we're leaving with 19 high school students on our annual Historically Black College and University tour out to North Carolina. So just, if you do, keep us in your prayers for traveling grace. And we're going to be representing Beloit. These young people are dynamic. We're excited to take them out, to learn just a lot of things about the culture and the experience of a historically black college. So we'll be gone for approximately six days, and then we'll be back, so. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Slonaker.
I had the opportunity to attend the brave meeting, and it was very informational, and I thought there was a lot of good conversation, a lot of great ideas to make our community better, and also to help support the police department. So I'm looking forward to what they're going to do in the future. And I attended the regular meetings that we had as well.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly.
This weekend, there's a Wisconsin Main Street awards are being handed out, and we're heading out to Marshville because downtown Beloit is getting an award for their 15-year celebration. So we'll have to have a group there represent Beloit.
Thank you. Counselor Loopkey.
I was honored to represent at the Fire Department for Mark Froze's retirement after 17 years chief, is that right? And last Friday, I was honored to be at the Angel Museum, where five prominent black Beloiters were honored for contributions to our culture and our city. I want to, I don't usually take this time to address, but I want to address a good friend and very respected colleague, an individual who served on the city council and who's been a Beloit ambassador. Mr. Frozen's an ambassador to the schools. Mr. Walder Knight's an ambassador to our city. But I just wanted to say something so that we don't have a misconception in the public. A statement you made, Mr. Knight, presupposed that we had our minds made up as to the chief. And I can state for myself, we wanted to bring the best possible person in. And we didn't want to make the mistake or the perception that the school district made in appointing their superintendent. My personal opinion is they got a very good superintendent, but I think they were soundly criticized for not going out and looking at all the candidates. We did not want to make that mistake, so we posted the job. And we wanted to find the best person. My mind was made up at the night that we had the candidates or the three finalists come to the Beloit Public Library. I was there with at least 100 other Beloiters. And each individual had 10 minutes to talk about themselves privately. The other candidates were not there. Then they took 20 minutes of questions, questions from the audience. They weren't preordained questions, they just came from the audience. What I heard that night and further investigation really solidified my choice. And I think the other counselors felt somewhat the same because it was 7-0. We didn't take that lightly. So I just wanted to say, our minds were not made up. That's why there was no thought of even going before the PFC and asking for an individual, because we wanted to search the country for the best person. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I also was able to attend the retirement for firefighter Mark Froze and thank him for his service. And I attended the all-city Boy Scouts Pine Wood Derby yesterday, which was a wonderful event. It's nice to see the look of pride and accomplishment on the Boy Scouts' faces for their fantastic cars. And was able to attend two brave meetings. And I'd like to say that I'm really pleased with the group of residents that have stepped forward to really work together with us to address crime and violence in our community. And I really want to just echo the tenor of what Daryl had to say, that this was a group that cares so deeply and wants to be collaborative. They've already expressed that they're not there just to complain. They really do want to work with us and finding some creative solutions, work closely with the police department. And I really appreciate that positive, you know, collaborative spirit. So thank you for that, and we're looking forward to really working with you. And want to take this opportunity to thank all of our Neighborhood Watch groups that we have throughout the city, who tirelessly work with their local officers and their beats to really help make our city safer. So thank you for that. That's all.
All right, thank you. Counselor Kincaid.
I'm going to be forward-thinking and say, I'm voting tomorrow. I'll see you at 7 o'clock, please. I want to say one other thing, and it's, I will admit that the past several weeks, if not longer, the preoccupation for most of us in this room possibly, has been our search for a police chief. And that, to me, trumps a lot of the meetings that we meant to or could have gone to. And I personally feel that we've done exactly the right thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, and I have nothing to add tonight. All right, item 10 would be City Manager's presentation. We have none. Item 11, reports from boards and city officers, 11A.
Is a resolution setting the salary for the municipal court judge?
All right, Madam City Manager.
Thank you. The Code of General Ordinances calls for the city to annually set, pardon me, not annually, yes, to, not annually, thank you, to set the salary of the municipal court judge prior to the election. You have before you a resolution to do just that in the amount of $31,070. I will tell you that on average, attorneys in the City of Beloit earn approximately $175 to $200 per hour. Given the fact that we expect the municipal judge to work approximately 10 to 12 hours per week, depending upon workload, that comes out to an average of $50 to $60 per hour. So we think that $31,000 and change is a very reasonable sum, and recommend this resolution for your approval.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Sound moved.
Moved by DeForest, second by Slonaker. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Thank you for answering the question I forwarded to you, Ms. Luther. Also, just for the public's sake, could you share how much the current judge made this past year, just so they know?
Judge Henderson earned $31,089. We rounded to a slightly lesser amount.
And this is comparable to other municipalities and what they pay their municipal judges?
We did not survey that particular, for what those other judges might be earning. There are great variances about caseload and time commitment for various services that are provided. So looking at what our current judge was earning and the number of hours, and knowing what attorneys in Beloit, what their wage rate is, we still believe that this is an appropriate amount.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 11B.
Is a resolution approving the real estate purchase agreement for the sale of 2401 State Line Road, Beloit?
Madam City Manager.
Thank you. We have a PowerPoint presentation, there we go. Before we go through this document, I just want to point out the fact that as the economy has continued to recover, is continuing to recover, the market for Class A industrial warehouse space in greater Beloit and Rock County has continued to grow. We have recognized that there is currently an unmet gap in regard to the amount of industrial space that is currently being sought after. And we are pleased to present to you this evening an agreement that will begin the construction of a 100,000-square-foot building. What you see before you is a rendering of a built-out project at what we're referring to as the State Line Industrial Park. And this is the proposed real estate purchase agreement with Hendrick's Commercial Properties. Here is the specific property. You'll notice that the location is just south of the wastewater treatment plant. We, the address is 2401 State Line Road. And the first 100,000-square-foot building is illustrated there, and the space adjacent is for additional potential growth. You have before you some information regarding the demand for industrial space. Janesville recently was considering a tax increment financing project for 150,000-square-foot building. Our local reporter here in the audience wrote an article also about the demand for industrial space in Beloit. So we recognize that this is an area that we really do need some additional space in order to meet that need. So the proposed site is just over 30-acre parcel that is owned by the city. And the proposal itself is a state-of-the-art, multi-phase spec building. The market, as we indicated, does suggest a very strong demand for this high-quality, flexible warehouse space. It can also be distribution or other industrial uses. Because there is no specific tenant at this point in time, that is hence the title, spec building, speculative space. But there are multiple leads, strong interest, and we do believe that there will be tenants prior to the completion of construction. Phase one of the construction is the initial just over 100,000-square-foot, 105,000-square-foot building, to be precise. The intent is to begin construction later this month upon approval. Substantial completion is anticipated by the end of this year, and there is a $6 million capital investment. Phase two is an additional 105,000-square-foot building that would be adjacent to the initial building to begin within three-
building to begin within three years of construction, or three years of completion of the public infrastructure. Again, that is another $6 million capital investment. And phase three is another potential 210,000-square-foot of building space, so 12 million in private capital investment. The city's only obligation in this particular project is the utility work that is required. You have later on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda, is a proposed tax increment district budget amendment that would account for those additional expenses. That cost is 204,000, 204,100, we get really precise with our estimates here. That just over $200,000 investment, with the phase one construction alone, would be paid off prior to the closure of that tax increment financing district. That TID is scheduled, the expenditure period ends in 2018, and the actual district closes in 2023. We are offering to sell the land itself for a dollar. Again, we would be paying for the $200,000 cost of infrastructure improvements. However, the phase one alone will provide more than sufficient cash flow to cover those initial costs. So even if this particular building remained vacant for a number of years, the increase in the property value would be more than enough to pay back the city's initial investment. From a cost-return on investment perspective, this is a very good financial investment for the city. There is a buyback provision to repurchase the undeveloped eastern lot, again, for a dollar, back to the city if the phase two proposed construction does not occur within the three-year period that's defined in the document. Also on your agenda this evening was a referral to the Plan Commission, and the intention was to have a parallel process. These documents would not be executed until fully authorized by the Plan Commission in regard to a stormwater and drainageway easement. The way that this particular lot is located, and its proximity, not only to the wastewater treatment plant, but in being developed in general, will require some water runoff to be...
Diverted.
Thank you. Diverted? Yes.
Passed.
Passed-through is also accurate terminology. The developer will be responsible for all of the construction of the stormwater and drainageway improvements at their sole expense. They will be responsible for the general maintenance of the stormwater facilities. We will be responsible for any extraordinary costs associated with maintaining the drainageway that is currently our property. So that is not an unusual request on their behalf. That particular easement would be coming back to the council for its ultimate consideration after Plan Commission review on April 18th. We just wanted to keep everything moving so that, should all that come together, we'll be ready to move forward with the real estate transaction. The resolution amending the 2016 tax increment number eight budget will include the additional 204,100 that will be needed for the sewer and water utility extensions. We are having both of those on the agenda at the same time this evening. So that was in a very quick fashion, an overview of this potential project. We're very enthusiastic about this opportunity, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, do we have a motion to approve to get this on the table? Moved by Loopkey, second by Kincaid. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I am appreciative of the multimillion-dollar capital investment. However, this is still 31 acres of land and that we're providing, and the TID resources we're using for the infrastructure development. I just want to make sure, have any other entities expressed interest in developing a spec building so we're not giving an unfair advantage to HCP?
There's been no other interest in this particular parcel.
Okay. And I understand it's next to the wastewater treatment plant, so there's really no other desirable probably development of this piece of land besides storage, is that correct?
Industrial uses, such as those that have been proposed, are really consistent with the current zoning, the current anticipated land use, and I have a difficult time envisioning any other potential use on that particular site.
Yeah, understandable. I wanted to ask too, I know there's a buyback provision for the parcel that's not being developed initially in the first phase. Will taxes be paid on that parcel before that buyback is exercised? Will we at least get some benefit from that parcel?
All right, Madam City Attorney, go ahead.
Once the property changes hands to Hendrick's Commercial Properties, it becomes a taxable entity. So taxes will be paid on whatever improvements are made on the property.
Wonderful. And then finally, just because it makes me nervous with the really vague nebulous language about the city being responsible for extraordinary costs with stormwater drainage, do we, could you help me, from a layperson's perspective, what could that possibly be or look like, and how likely is it there might be some extraordinary...
So my experience with detention ponds and with areas that are designed to carry water, the most likely scenario might be that in the future, at some point, if silt is allowed to build up within that drainageway, it may have to be dredged at some point in time. I think that's really the most significant concern outside of some massive flooding event that is highly unlikely at this particular location. So we went through an extraordinary amount of negotiation over the maintenance of this area. What does maintenance mean? What must be done by whom and when? And how is that drainageway established? So I'm very comfortable with the language that we ultimately settled on, but that was an issue that we had extensive conversations about in order to get to a place where we were comfortable, assuming a very minimal amount of risk, given the fact that the development of this property and required them to actually purchase an easement from a neighboring property. It was fairly in-depth and complex in order to get the design to work adequately. I'll be happy to defer to the Public Works Department if they have any additional details.
And then, so just to be clear, there is long-term benefit for the city in developing this parcel of land, both with the detention and with the infrastructure, because to date is, the expenditure's closing pretty quickly. So if we don't do a project like this in this parcel, we could lose the opportunity to use those TID funds.
Absolutely. And with that expenditure period expiring in 2018, timing really is of an essence for both the city and the developer. So really, the timing couldn't be better for this particular project. And the anticipated value, again, of that first phase of construction that is slated to be completed by the end of this year, will more than pay for that $200,000 investment upfront. So from that very basic mathematical, financial perspective, I really see this as being a big win for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments from counselors? Hearing none, I'll call the matter, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. All right, item 11C.
Is a resolution amending the 2016 tax increment district eight budget to include the project to incent an industrial development building?
Right. Madam City Manager.
Again, I would reiterate that sufficient funds are available in TID eight to fund this expense of $204,100, and the budget amendment is presented before you so we can move forward with the engineering and the sewer and water infrastructure improvements.
Do we have a motion to approve? Motion. Moved by Loopkey, second by Kelly, Counselor DeForest.
Sorry, thank you. I just want to make sure, for clarification, we are extending the sewer and water to the entire parcel, even though we're only doing the phase one site development, correct? We're taking advantage of doing this now and do the whole piece?
That is correct. And I would also mention that to date is the same TID that we receive payment from...
The nation, the HoChunk Nation.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, HoChunk Nation for the land purchase previously this year. So there are sufficient funds available, cash on hand. We're not just anticipating future increment. We have sufficient dollars to fund this project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other counselor comments or questions? All right then, I'll call the matter, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 12 is adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Slonecker, second by Hendricks. All in favor of adjournment, say aye? Aye? We are adjourned.